I will call the city council for the meeting on Wednesday, October 16th, 2013, at 7:30 PM. Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Evans, Mr. Rancuso, Mr. Jones, Mr. Mursky, Mr. Witherspoon. All please rise for a moment of silent meditation, and then we will have St. Luke's Boy Scout Troop come up for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Mr. President, I ask that we remember all those in our community that are less fortunate than we are in any and every way. I ask that we remember in our thoughts and our prayers, just the whole community, the community as a whole with all the issues of violence and crime that we're experiencing as a community in the city. Let's put our thoughts and prayers towards solutions and peace in our community. And also, we thank and appreciate our Father for Creator for giving us the wisdom and the proper information to make the best decisions for the citizens of the city of Erie.
Hi, somebody else? Go ahead. I would like to mention to keep our longtime deputy city clerk, who got sick about three years ago, had an operation and then she had a stroke after the surgery. Gloria Creschon, she was with me for 44 years as deputy city clerk and did a great job and was well-known in the building and by a lot of people in the city. Very, very sorry to see her pass away Monday. And her funeral will be on Saturday. So just remember her in our prayers. Pledge of Allegiance, Mr. Rancuso.
If I could invite St. Luke's Boy Scout Troop 9 to come up. These young men are working on a citizenship badge. They have spent some time learning about city government, and they're going to come up here and lead us in the pledge of allegiance. And then I hope they have elected a spokesperson who can tell us a little bit about what they're all working on. When you're ready, boys.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now I need someone to take the mic and introduce your fellow Boy Scouts and tell us a little bit about what you've been doing to work on your badges and whatnot.
You can use your microphone.
I can use whichever mic.
That one works better.
What's your name?
Okay. I'm David DuPey. I'm from St. Luke's Troop 9, and we're working on our citizenship and the Community Mayor badge. And one of our requirements was to come to a council meeting like this and hope all goes well.
Now, did you pick up an agenda when you came in? One of those pieces of paper when you came in? Whoops, it's like this. Our meeting, what we will do is we will follow along this agenda, and we're voting on ordinances, which we all talked about. Those are laws, those are city laws, they're called ordinances. And we will also vote on resolutions, and those are things that we're working on, but not necessarily a law. And when we vote, sometimes you'll see when we vote, we don't say anything, and that's a vote that means yes, we don't say anything. We really only have to say if we say no. And we have a special board that we sometimes use on difficult issues where we vote by checking a green or red box up there. So what we probably, I don't think we have any of those today, those big issues. But I thank you for coming and welcome you to stay for as long as you can. If you do have to leave, we understand and you're more than welcome to sneak out when you need to, because homework comes first. Thank you, gentlemen.
We have another young gentleman here tonight, our junior council member that I'll have Mr. Witherspoon introduce. Whatever you'd like to do, sir.
This is Charlie Lichtenwalter, and I met Charlie, what, two years ago? He signed up for the summer basketball league, and I've seen Charlie grow. But he also grew and continued to grow in school. Graduated St. George Grade School in 2013, awarded the Principal's Award for Leadership, Academics, and Athletic Participation. He was the only student of 75 attending St. George School to be chosen from the eighth grade class. Vice President, Student Council, eighth grade year. Academic Honor Roll, both seventh and eighth grades. Attending Mercyhurst Prep High School. Whereas, a ninth grader, he was a starter on the golf team. I might need you there, Charlie. Will be trying out in the next month for their basketball team. Along with his sister Claire, he has been volunteering at the soup kitchen on a monthly basis for the past three years. Charlie, it's my pleasure and welcome.
Basically, I'm just happy to be here, and I like that Mr. Witherspoon recognized what I've been trying to do and be a good person for the last couple of years, and just thank you for being here.
In the past two years, I watched Charlie participate. His first year, he came up in the neighborhood, and he's a little shaky, a little nervous. And I had the opportunity of coaching him for two years. And I decided to give a trophy in honor of Jim Thompson. It's called the Hard Work Award, presented to Charles "Charlie" Lichtenwalter, Boys' Age Group 13 to 15, Spoon Summer League. Congratulations, Charlie.
Welcome, Charlie. Welcome, the Boy Scouts from St. Luke's. We also have some students from McDowell, I believe. They're here doing a government project. Well, welcome. I hope you learned a lot. With that, we will proceed with our meeting. We have any requests for a repository sale tonight? Mr. Brown, if you would, please.
Hello.
Good evening.
I have a request in the city of Erie to purchase a property at 526 East 12th Street. Own the property next door to this since 1999. Have maintained the property, have kept it litter-free. The property is undersized per code, so it can't be built on again, or I don't believe there's ever been anything built on it. I've had a title search done on it. The city has been deeded it since 1974 for a tax lien sale. And it goes back to 1896 as the last person who owned it. And what I'd like to do is purchase it, continue to maintain it, pay taxes on it, and control any traffic or trespassing and stuff on it.
Any questions, council?
This is just a little piece of vacant land.
Little piece of vacant land. It's 25 and a half feet by 160.
And you've already been taking care of it for as long as you've lived next door?
Yes.
Thank you.
Since 1999.
And you have intentions to build or anything, or put a shed or garage, anything?
No, just to give that little bit of elbow room, and if eventually I wanted to have it added to, deeded to the property that I have there, I would take it through the courts and get a clear title to it. But just now, it's just continue to maintain it, keep the odd even parking traffic off of it, or somebody, you know, parking a car in on there, next you know it's running, I have to call property maintenance Tony Lombardi to come on out, put a tag on it, you know, somebody get it moved, or to have it towed.
Okay, okay.
But it's just, you know, just generally to control it and to pay taxes on it. I also ask that any back taxes be forgiven, you know, forgiven on it.
Right, that comes with the repository, so.
Okay.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Thank you for taking care of it.
Any other questions, council? Thank you, Mr. Brown. Naturally, we do not vote on this tonight. We do it a later date, most likely our next meeting, and if everything holds true to form, you'll own a little lot next to your property down there.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for the years of upkeep on it also.
No problem. Thank you. Have a great night.
Any other repository sales tonight? Mr. Koppelman, is yours for a repository sale?
Okay, thank you. Don Koppelman, 326 Berkeley Drive.
Mr. Koppelman, one moment, please. Is there any other repository sales to be heard tonight? Hearing none, we're going to move to citizens to be heard. And, Mr. Koppelman, you're up.
All right, thank you. Yeah, anybody that signed up, make sure to get them in here before I start here. Okay. All right, I would like to comment on the item for first reading, which there is one. And it's to approve the sale of a property located on Port SS Road from the Port Authority to the Erie Industrial Development Corporation, for about a million-plus dollars, so on and so forth. This sale is probably for positive action, so I'm not actually against it, but I'd like to comment that along this, what I refer to and some others refer to as the Little Peninsula, you've got the lake to the east, Lake Erie to the east, you've got the bay to the west, and you've got the channel across the top. So it forms a little peninsula, in contrast to Prescott State Park. And the Port Authority, which I guess I gotta give them credit, they have done a good job for developing the bay from Cassi- Cascade Street all the way across to State Street and on over to the Little Peninsula. And probably should tell them that they've done a great job, but anyway, they are capable of doing some great work. Now, the Port Authority also has done a good job, a great job on the Little Peninsula. They added a, firstly, I think they added the marina, and that marina is the only marina that opens out into Lake Erie. And it may be others, I don't know, but that's the one I'm aware of, that all the other ones open to the bay. Now, there's advantages, disadvantages to that, but they put in that marina. And they come along and put in a campground from the marina to the South Pier, which has opened to people and sold out last year. In fact, for the Perry 200th Main Anniversary, there were, ships were all here and everything. That thing was sold out a year before the event, so it's been growing all along. But anyway, they did that. They did that for the people. And then they worked on the parking lot for the South Pier, and that's convenient that they did that. And then across the channel there, you've got Erie Sand and Gravel, which is a non-polluting, far as I know, non-polluting facility. They don't send up any smoke or anything. Never have been cited for pollution that I know of. And then down the other side is that new highway. And along there, there's room, and on that Little Peninsula, there's room for recreational developments, for people use, for, I'll say, soccer's growing like mad. And we really could use some good soccer fields, real good soccer fields. Some of the high schools and the colleges would appreciate that. Tennis courts could be in there, softball fields. Our softball fields are so far below standard that, yeah, we think they're pretty good, but when you go out and see other complexes, they're so far below that, that you could put in softball fields in there. And the thing of it is, there's room for all of these things. It's a little peninsula, but there's a lot of land there. And in addition to this, in doing these things for people, people activities, there's the wetlands in there. And there's two of them, possibly three, but two for sure, and those wetlands could be saved. You know, there's still room for all that stuff. Now, when I was growing up, up in Michigan, the western side of Michigan, those wetlands were called swamps. You know, they were undesirable areas. And we would go down in the winter and skate and build bonfires, and there's a railroad track along there, and the firemen on the train would throw coal off the train, and we'd go over and pick it up. And so we had a great time, but whenever those things were filled in, when those swamps were filled in, it was treated as a great development. You know, little did we know that those swamps are really useful, and so those wetlands could be saved without damaging them and stuff. And, well, this reminds me of something. Just a short story here, okay? This reminds me of Admiral Perry. One day, he's down there by the ships in their building in Niagara and the Lawrence, and he's kind of bored, things aren't going on, so he takes a walk. He likes to walk along the bay, and there was trails there at that time, you could walk along the bay. And he gets out of the ways, and here's an Indian maiden there. She smiles at him, waves, so being a friendly fellow, he waves back. She motioned for him to come, so he goes along there, and she keeps going west and finally they get to Cascade Creek. So she takes off her moccasins and walks across, so he takes off his boots and he goes across. Only problem was, a little ways later, there was a group of male brave Indians there, and two of them were pretty friendly with this gal. And so, right away, they took a dislike to Perry. So they each grabbed some of their friends and combined their efforts, you know. Normally, they were rivals, but here they combined, and after they went to Perry. So Perry, he wasn't always getting credit for being the smartest guy, but courage was never doubted. Perry's courage was never doubted. But he knew enough that maybe it's time to go back to the shipyard, you know?
Mr. Koppelman.
So he turns around, and he starts walking to the shipyard, suddenly he looks back, and they're gaining on him, so he walks a little faster. He gets to the creek, he goes right across, he didn't take off his boots, he zoomed right across the creek, and then he starts running out. Perry was a good runner. Any events we had around there, five K thing, he would have done well. But he runs, and he gets back to the Niagara, and he climbs up there, and the Indians keep coming, you know? So now he's up in the Niagara, and he looks down at them, and there's a bunch of logs there. Now Perry's hurting for help, so he looks down there, and these guys got their tomahawks waving around, you know? And he looks down there, and he says, hey, can you chop up those logs for firewood? It's getting cold in the morning here, we need somebody to chop it up. Well, by that time, the militia come down, the soldiers came down, so the Indians left. But anyway, at that time, the whole bayfront line was available for public use, for everybody. You can't walk around there today and stuff like that.
Thank you. Mr. Koppelman, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Amy.
Hello, Council. My name's Amy Compratore. I'm at 913 State Street, apartment 903. I want to talk to you about a little Miraculous stuff today. There's, first, I'd like to talk to you about the buses. I know that's not a shock to you all. There's a lot of filth that are, and I'm talking garbage. I'm talking cigarette butts. I'm talking trash, you know? And whether it's because people aren't using the receptacles, or whether the people that are responsible for the bus stops don't clean up the stops, you know? I've talked to you guys before about where does the responsibility begin and end here? How much of it is, say, the authority's responsibility, being EMTA for having the stops there and being able to care for its stops? Because let's face it, if you have a pet, then you're responsible for that pet. You know, the city don't come down and say, well, you know, are you taking care of that pet? And grudge you about it. No. You have to take your own initiative, you know? You feed it, you clean it, and the bus stops are basically, I think, the EMTAs' little pets in a sense, and they need to start taking care of them. It's, I have walked down streets like French Street that are not even breathable, and the air is so toxic because of not just the cigarettes on the ground, but because of, there is so much density. I mean, you could go out on State Street, and even if people were smoking on State Street for whatever dynamic it is, you know, you would be able to go to the stop regardless. You try doing that anywhere between 8th and 10th on French. I give you that challenge. Also, I'd like to bring up one of the things that was brought up in the public hearing that I think got sideswiped and getting addressed. There was a gentleman at the public hearing that had addressed about 900 State Street and about people, and the vagrancy issue basically is what it comes down to. It's not a bus issue, it's a vagrancy issue. And I can tell you, there's other businesses, like the Masonic Temple, for instance, which I've talked to Ron Jones about it, and he's giving me permission to talk about it with you guys today, that we get over there at the Masonic Temple, I have a meeting over there every Thursday for the past three years, and every now and then, I have to open up the girls' bathroom. And I have to open up a couple of different places. Well, I've even found people in there that aren't supposed to be there, and I've found really deplorable conditions. And that's because we're not treating this vagrancy issue appropriately. That's not because of the bus people. That's because we have homeless on the streets that are looking for a warm place to be, and this mainly happens at the temple during the winter months. We're coming in the upcoming season. I don't need to tell Erieites that Halloween's our spring off to winter. And I'm wondering if there's some distinction here that you can do on behalf of the people in the city here about the vagrancy and the homeless issue with this, combining into this, how to separate it out. I think it would do a lot of good for a lot of our people. You know, people like to be brought up in themselves. They like to better themselves. It's hard to do sometimes with or without money. And I firmly believe that we have to start bettering our people. I hear a lot about wanting to attract new kinds of people to Erie. That's a wonderful and beautiful thing with redevelopment. However, redevelopment starts at home. If we don't take care of the people that we have in the city, who's going to be attracted to come to this city? It's attraction that brings people. It's not just the attraction of what attractions we have out there like Prescott, but it's the things that you remember about the city after you've visited, how warm the people were to you, you know, whether there was a helping hand or not, how courteous they were. And we need to begin this effort at home. You know, I plug Mr. Witherspoon with what he does with the basketball and basically the ground roots. I'm asking you to invest more in the ground roots of this, that if we bring this thing from the bottom up, maybe there won't be such of a bottom. You know, for those of you who have a background with criminology, go to Cohen's measuring rods. And, you know, if we get, if basically there's no middle class, then we don't have much of a distance. And I'll wrap it up with this. It takes time for people to want to become better things, but if you provide them the tools, and if you better them and help them better in themselves, then they will be better people, and you will be better trusted servants for helping them become better people. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy.
Good evening, council members.
Good evening.
My name is John Schubert. Live at 2413 East Avenue. Been there 50 years, been on the east side all my life. Basically, I come down here, I'm on that CAC committee for the McBride Viaduct. We recently naturally had a, the company come up, and their suggestion was to put an interchange on Buffalo Road. One of the things that disturbed me the most was they projected 100 years on this project. Just to name a few, we put $80 million into the airport, 30-some millions going to the EMTA, 40 million to the Warner, 40-some million to the Civic Center, 80-some million to the Convention Center. Not one of these projects have we ever, that I'm aware of, have we ever projected to be 100 years down the road. This McBride Viaduct is a key to the east side, same as Parade Street. Those are your two major routes. One of the things that I've been advocating, and I will say this about the CAC meeting, 90-some percent of the people that were in that committee wanted the bridge, either replacement or repaired. And from day one, quite frankly, the administration has been very negative from day one, and this is over a period of three years. The, like I said, the east side, the people, again, as you know, there was almost 13,000 signatures of people that wanted to maintain this bridge. What people are not taking into consideration, we have an outside firm that comes up from basically Pittsburgh, and they're trying to direct what we do day in and day out. For example, one of the meetings that they had, a friend of mine was their neighbor, he said, you know, he said, they had a group of people that were relatively new to this country, didn't even know the bridge existed. They had to have an interpreter to explain to them what was going on. They had no idea that there was even a bridge there, you know, for use. So these are things, sure, they went out and they said they talked to the minority and that. I have yet. They used the term that, the alternative. Even when you use the term alternative, people are not taking into consideration, again, Franklin Avenue eventually is going to go down for repairs. We may lose GE, we may have to try to get other people there. We don't know that yet. We have other companies, such as where the Hammer Mill site is and that going down. When you drive down East Avenue now, it's like a dead area. And when you have a dead area, it also creates crime, because there's less people. People move out, businesses don't stay. Like I said before, even a friend of mine, he owns Carpet Town, he says, they don't care. East side. He says, family's been in the business over 100 years. He says, there's no sense talking to the administration, because they have all the answers. But he says, we're the ones that are suffering. The distance of children going to school to East High, they still walk over the bridge. I see them when I'm down that area. The, when you go up the bayfront, the bayfront still runs at an angle. It does not run north-south like the bridge did. And these children- He says, "Family's been in the business over 100 years." He says, "There's no sense talking to the administration because they have all the answers." But he says, "We're the ones that are suffering." The distance of children going to school to East High, they still walk over the bridge. I see them when I'm down that area. When you go up the bayfront, the bayfront still runs at an angle. It does not run north-south like the bridge did. And these children are still walking across there, and eventually, they walk across the bayfront trying to get to the bridge and what have you and that. So, the thing of it is, we're not looking ahead down the road. The emergency vehicles, they say, "Yes, we're in the guidelines." Yes, we are, within the federal. But you tell a son or a daughter, or a mother or a father that just lost a child or a parent and that, and say, "Well, you know, we're within the federal guidelines, but we could have been there three, four minutes sooner if we would have went straight instead of going around all the traffic and that." It doesn't...it's not going to set too well. And unless you actually experience it yourself, you're really not...you know, you can make a story of it, but the fact of it is, sometimes minutes. And every article that you come out with safety and that, they say, "Minutes and seconds count" and that. The people...there has never been as many people on...at any of the meetings that we've had throughout the committees and that. I've been to other meetings and that, and the large amount of people that's been there, I'm sure some of you have been there, there's been a massive amount of people coming to these public meetings. What we like to do is finally do something for what the people want. And just to be short, I won't hold you up here, but if we were to use that figure, that $25 million, which is very inflated, it's actually about double of what the bridge would cost. It would have come out something like $3.00 in some cents per federal. It would have come out to about 57 cents in state. And the city, mind you, for that 100 years, using the figure of $25 million, which is double, comes out to 19 cents per person, per year. And that's using a figure only on 65,000 people. And to date, with the people that have been having to drive around the barricades and what have you and that, we...regardless how, Mr. Evans, he's pretty good with figures and that, if you were to add those up, the number...it's a good two miles going around and that, there's actually millions of dollars, regardless which way you want to play the figures, of what it's cost the people, that's less money coming into our economy down here. So, please...
I appreciate your...
...take this into consideration, because again, that one of you may run for mayor, and you guys are going to be, or women, are going to be the ones that's going to suffer down the road with the decaying East Side. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Good evening.
Good evening. My name's Keith Wallach. First of all, thank you again for inviting scouts of Troop 9 St. Luke's. We really appreciate it. My question is for, I believe, Mr. Witherspoon, who is the liaison for the Airport Authority, sir? I just have some questions. With the runway extension now, probably two or three months it's been completed, and I was for it, I think it's good for our community, have you heard anything about getting new destinations, you know, new cities, or even upgrading the service from Erie to Philadelphia with jets? Have you heard anything, sir?
There's been talk about it, but nothing concrete at this point. But there's talk about it right now.
I think it would be a good idea, and, you know, anything you could do to, you know, bring it along or as our liaison, be appreciated.
I will let them know. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thanks for bringing the boys tonight also.
Oh, your mayor, Terry Love.
Any other citizens to be heard this evening? Any other citizens to be heard? Mr. Clem?
Okay, we have a motion to approve the minutes from the October 2 meeting and bills for payment on October 18th, October 25th, and November 1st. Mr. Brennan, Mr. Evans, Ms. Rancunzo, Mr. Jones, Mr. Murzky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarski. We have Council File Ordinance 15,00848, an ordinance to approve the sale of property located on the Port Access Road and replacing all prior ordinances or parts thereof which conflict with the provision of this ordinance from the Erie, Pennsylvania, Northwestern Pennsylvania Port Authority to the Greater Erie Industrial Development Corporation for the sum of $1,300,000. Motion, Mr. Evans, second by Mr. Jones. Council File Ordinance Number 15,00848, haven't been read or submitted, but adopted on first reading of City Council. Mr. Brennan?
I will abstain from voting on this ordinance to avoid a conflict of interest since I'm an employee of EDC, which is the parent company of the GIDC.
Mr. Evans abstains, or Mr. Brennan abstains. Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mrs. Rancunzo? Mr. Jones? Mr. Murzky? Mr. Witherspoon? Mr. Winarski? Motion is adopted, ye six, one, nay zero, one abstention. Next, under Old Business, we have a resolution. I think it's number two. Number one has been withdrawn at the present time due to the fact that the petitioners, the Erie County Historical Society, has not yet been able to present their case to the Planning Commission. But then, secondly, we have a resolution by Mr. Murzky, second by Mr. Winarski, that the city clerk is authorized and directed to advertise for a public hearing on Wednesday, November 20th, at approximately 9:30 a.m. in council chambers relative to the rezoning of property commonly known as 3503 Pete Street, being the back portion of said property from R1A Traditional Single Family Residential to that of RLB Residential Limited Business at the request of Attorney James Tuohy, representing Erie Federal Credit Union, accompanied by the requisite filing fee of $500. Mr. Brennan?
Mr. President?
Yeah?
Yes. I believe we're planning to meet in the evening on that day. Would it not be more appropriate to have the public hearing at 8:30 p.m. than 9:30 a.m.?
Oh, I didn't know what your plans were. That would be...yeah, you'd have to come in in the morning.
Could we merely amend this to be 8:30 p.m., Mr. President?
Yes, yes, we could. We need a second.
Question, Mr. President? If I could, Mr. Clem?
Yes.
For our scheduled and advertised meetings, when is our meeting advertised? I just thought about that.
The November 20th meeting has been advertised for 9 a.m.
Okay, all right.
So, we would have to switch...
So, we would have...oh, sorry, go ahead.
We would have to...if you want to change it to the night meeting, we would have to pass a resolution rescheduling the meeting to Wednesday night at 7:30.
Right. We had that discussion in caucus about changing the meeting, but there's a formal process that has to happen to change it from a morning meeting to an evening meeting.
Right.
Right.
Okay. So, the citizens out there know, normally our November and December meetings, they're all morning meetings. And due to the fact that a few council members may not be able to make it on our second meeting in November in the morning, we are going to change that to an evening meeting. And we'll go through the protocol to do that if we can, Mr. Clem, and... Therefore, I would ask...
We would have to switch this time for our public hearing then.
Sponsors, Mr. Murzky, second by Mr. Winarski. Do you both agree to amending this?
I agree.
Okay. So, we'll change it from 9:30 a.m. to 8:30 p.m. Okay, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Evans, Ms. Rancunzo, Mr. Jones, Mr. Murzky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarski. It's passed, ye seven, nay zero, as amended.
Do we also need to then pass a resolution to change the time of the meeting, Jim?
Yes, somewhere between now and the next meeting.
I'd just make a motion that we change the data...or the time of the November 20th meeting to 7:30 p.m.
Okay.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. 11:20, 7:30 p.m. Okay, voting on the amendment, or voting on the resolution to change the meeting time, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Evans, Ms. Rancunzo, Mr. Jones, Mr. Murzky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarski. And I'll take care of the advertising.
Mr. President, another quick question, just while we're all kind of doing this on the fly. Should that public hearing be 8 o'clock as opposed to 8:30? Aren't they traditionally 8 o'clock?
They are traditionally, Mr. Jones, but we do have the budget being presented, so just to make sure there's plenty of time. I'd hate to have to rush through the agenda or something. I don't know. We might need more time with the budget with the mayor.
8:30 is fine, even if everything goes smoothly, we'll...
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine. 8:30 is good.
Just a question. All right. Thank you.
Mr. President, I move the balance of the adjournment.
I'll second that motion.
Any separations?
Can I separate one, please? Number one, please.
Number one?
One of these three.
Mr. President, could I separate number six for a question as well?
Certainly. Any other separations, council? Voting on the balance, Mr. Clem?
Voting on the balance, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Evans, Ms. Rancunzo, Mr. Jones, Mr. Murzky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarski. Next, we have a resolution by Mr. Murzky, second by Mr. Winarski, that the proper city officials are hereby authorized, directed to transfer ownership of 28 fire coats and 24 fire pants to Central Career and Technical School Protective Services Program. Central Career and Technical School is accepting this donation as an "as-is" donation. This worn-out equipment shall be used only for non-firefighting purposes.
Mr. Murzky.
I just wanted to make a couple of comments about this. The Central Career and Tech Protective Services Program is an excellent program. It helps our young people learn how to get training when they graduate from there as an EMS medic, and they also have police and fire training for our young people, and it gives them a jumpstart on the protective services careers. And so, I thank the city for, you know, and I'm very proud to sponsor this, 28 fire coats and 24 fire pants, to help train these young people for careers that will directly help the city. If we...especially, I know we talk a lot about increasing minority participation in our protective services, and this is a great way to do that, is through education. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Clem?
Voting on the resolution is read, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Evans, Ms. Rancunzo, Mr. Jones, Mr. Murzky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarski. Next, we have a resolution by Mr. Witherspoon, second by Mr. Murzky, that upon the initiative of City Council, at the request of Attorney Richard A. Vendetti, the city solicitor is hereby authorized, directed to prepare an ordinance rezoning 2021 and 2027 East 38th Street from R1 Low Density Residential District to that of C1 Local Commercial District, and after preparation, upset ordinance forward to the City Planning Commission for recommendation report thereon, to Erie City Council, accompanied by the requisite filing fee of $500. Discussion.
Mr. Counsel.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm just looking at this item, and we don't really have any documentation on it yet. I realize it's just being referred to the Planning Commission, but I'm wondering, do we know, is this pertains to that piece of land we did the rezoning on, McLolland?
No. This is another piece of property. We did send a letter out on SharePoint, Mr. Vendetti's.
Oh, I didn't see it. It's not connected on the agenda to the item.
I know. Sometimes it's...
Oh, there's a letter. Okay, sorry, I'll pardon you.
It's a former car wash that he owned next to Pizza Hut at 38th and Zimmerman.
Oh.
And the vacant lot next door to the closed parking car wash. And it was zoned for commercial use at one time, the car wash lot, but because of a zoning change some time ago, it was automatically rezoned to R1. So, Mr. Vendetti just basically found out about this and would like this rezoned back to what he had before at C1, plus the vacant lot next door.
Okay, thank you. I was...I'm glad you clarified that. I was thinking it was in a different location. Now, look for my document on here. I hadn't seen it. When I looked at the agenda, it wasn't tagged, so, thank you.
Roll call. Mr. Brennan, Mr. Evans, Ms. Rancunzo, Mr. Jones, Mr. Murzky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarski. Takes us to committee reports, Mr. President.
Mr. Brennan? Thank you, Mr. President. No, committee reports, I do have a couple of other items to talk about here. I did attend the Housing Authority 75th Anniversary Event, wonderful event. Congratulations to the Housing Authority. Couple Erie Zoo updates. The Zouboo event begins this Friday and runs through October 30th, and it's from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. And as a reminder, the zoo season runs from March 1st to November 30th. So, it's come up pretty quick here for the closing for the season. And the other item I want to talk about is the...something I'm going to get involved with, but the West Sixth Street, the historic structure, was demolished this past week, and it was reported the costs were too high to renovate, so that's why they had demolished the structure, and a garden's going to be installed. Of course, the owners were well within their right to demolish this structure, all the permits were issued. But I'm only bringing this up because I wanted to just inform everybody, maybe everybody knows, that there's a framework in place to protect our historic structures already within our zoning ordinance, and what is called a historic overlay district exists, and this could be identified and activated, which would provide guidelines for preservation and renovation in that area. But we currently do not have any districts identified on the zoning map, so we have this zoning ordinance, but there's no area identified on the map yet. But as a member of City Council, as a board member of Preservation Erie, a meeting this Friday with the Erie County Historical Society to take action upon updating this article as well as identifying these districts, I believe that it is very important to protect our city's unique history and historical structures, and I think by activating this historic overlay district, it'll be a positive step to help provide this protection. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brennan. Mr. Evans?
Thank you, Mr. President. As David mentioned, there were several of us, Jessica, myself, Mel, and David, that went to the Housing Authority 75th Anniversary Celebration last Friday night. It was an incredibly uplifting and moving experience. The Housing Authority is not only 75 years old, it's one of the first housing authorities in the country presently providing affordable housing to over 3,000 families in our community. It's really a super-success story, and I think everybody associated with the authority, particularly their executive director, John Haran, ought to be congratulated. They had two excellent speakers, Doris Tate Johnson, a retired colonel in the United States Army, who grew up in public housing, and who credits John Haran for being, you know, her mentor and an important force in her life, gave a very, very moving story. And then Jay Adams from the School District Superintendent talked about the importance of good housing and keeping families together, creating an environment in which education is successful. So, it was just a great event. Second of all, wanted to mention that the Blighted Property Review Committee has been having some preliminary discussions with the Erie County Gaming Revenue Authority about getting funding for the purpose of hiring a consultant to assist the Redevelopment Authority and the city's community economic development people to explore further this concept of a land bank. So, would like to take this discussion to kind of do the next step as to how it might work in Erie. And in order to do that, they're going to survey the marketplace to see the different consultants that work in this field, and in order to find the money to do...to hire a consultant, they're talking with the Gaming Revenue Authority. So, that's the first step in a very long process, but I think it's important that it's beginning. So that's the first step in a very long process, but I think it's important that it's beginning. I've reported in the past that the Port Authority has let contracts to construct the wall on the cruise boat terminal, the portion of which collapsed a year or so ago. If you've been down there recently, that construction is well underway. They've removed a lot of the face of the wall and are preparing to rebuild the entire wall, the entire length of that, that pier, which will then establish the pier as something that can be used for both commercial and industrial traffic in the future. And then they will move across the waterway and reconstruct the wall next to Donjon. So this is a two-phase project that they've begun. Lastly, I want to report that I attended the meeting yesterday of the Erie Planning Commission, at which the Industrial Development Authority and Economic Development Corporation made a presentation to the Planning Commission regarding the inland port project and specifically asked that the Planning Commission approve a blight designation for the property for the purpose of enabling the project to qualify for federal and state funding. Those at the Planning Commission clearly wanted to differentiate between a technical designation of blight and the common definition that we all think of as blight. There are a number of blight conditions listed in the, in the regulations. And this land does meet several of those. And therefore, it positions the project at a much higher probability of receiving federal and state funding that would otherwise go someplace else. And it will also position the project to potentially take advantage of tax increment financing. I spoke at length in favor of that for two reasons. Number one, because this will ultimately result in the property being on the tax rolls. If it remains undeveloped, it will never be on the tax rolls. And number two, because the project and its fruition will bring, in the first phase, four to five hundred family-sustaining industrial jobs. And there can be additional phases beyond that. So I recognize that there were those who were disturbed, including the administration, by the use of the term blight, and I appreciate that. But I think the larger economic issues for the city and for the entire community cannot be overlooked. And I was pleased that when the discussion ended, the Commission voted three to nothing to approve moving forward. There'll be many more hearings in front of many more bodies. This wasn't the final time. But I think it is a very important first step in a project that has tremendous economic potential for our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Mr. Witherspoon.
Thank you, Mr. President. And Charlie, I want to thank you very much for taking time out of your evening and studies to come down and sit with us and witness all the hard work we do. Most of the work is done on the phone and committee meetings, but we still have to deal with it. And congratulations to the work you're doing at school and especially your volunteer. The trophy you received, Charlie, is from, on behalf of Jim Thompson, very hard-working councilman at the time. When folks would call and tell them that there's a skunk outside, Jim would go get a cage, set it there. Once he caged the skunk, he would take it out in the wild somewhere. We never know where he let it loose. But he would do those type of things. He was a hard-working individual all the time. And you worked very hard the two years that I worked with you, and I think you deserved that. And congratulations again. On another note, Mr. President, I just think the committee, council, and folks need to know. Let me read a letter that I sent to the Honorable Mr. Bill Cole, Democratic Chair. It says, "Based upon our phone conversation this morning, October third, twenty thirteen, at approximately ten twenty A.M., you informed me that you have been presented with concerns of my support for John Evans for City Council. With John being a member of the Republican Party and me a member of the Democratic Party and award chairman, has drawn some concerns from members of the Democratic Party, to the point that they have placed upon your plate a choice." Quote, "Ask Mel to resign as Ward Chairman or bring it to a vote at the next meeting."
With all due respect, I believe politics does not come into play at our council meetings, and I.
I respect your request, sir. But, well, let me just say this. I place twenty years of friendship in front of politics. We, as seven individuals, work together. We don't always agree on specific items and issues, but we work together. And there's not one up here that I have not supported in any way. So, Mr. President, you missed the best part of my presentation. But anyway, no, I wasn't shooting anybody out, and I'm not mad at Mr. Cole or anything like that. They had to do what they had to do. But I'm not going, if somebody tells me they don't like you and they don't want me to be your friend, that's hogwash. Thank you, Mr. President. Especially.
Ms. Kuntso.
Oh, you make me follow that. I'm all stressed out. Mr. Witherspoon, I'll be your friend. Don't worry. And Mr. Evans, I'll be your friend, too. I just wanted to mention that they all talked about the Housing Authority Seventy-Fifth Anniversary Dinner. And I did have the honor of meeting Colonel Doris Tate Johnson. She's one of the true heroes of public housing. And they like to recognize folks who have used their time in public housing as a step up, as a way to help themselves to step up and out. And she certainly has given back to the community in numerous ways over, over her career. She was a nurse. She went to school to be, put herself through nursing school. And then after she worked as a nurse for some time, she worked at the Veterans Hospital, the VA Hospital, and decided, well, maybe she ought to go into the Army. And then she worked, served in the military for, I don't know, something like thirty years in the military. And was promoted to the rank of Colonel and has recently retired. But, you know, we, we need to celebrate those folks who really have those great success stories. And there are many, many numerous stories like, like hers. And we don't want to forget that that's, you know, that's what the Housing Authority is for, to help people, to help people, give them the support they need so that they can move up and move on. And then that, that source is there for the next person who needs it. So really, we were very impressed to meet her. She was a great lady, and I appreciate the opportunity to have met her. The other event that I wanted to mention was the Mercy Hill Talk Center. It's a senior center, celebrated its forty-fifth anniversary as well on the same day. They do great work with our senior citizens and our community, providing activities, providing education, recreation, and, and just a nice place and a camaraderie for the folks to go and spend time. So I want to congratulate them on their forty-fifth anniversary as well. And, and I think that's all I have. I want to thank the Boy Scouts for coming today. We always like to see young people who are learning about government. And hopefully, they learned from us today, and they will be involved and engaged as citizens. And we know, we talk to them about the most important thing is remembering to vote. And hopefully, they will be future council people of Erie or wherever they might find themselves. So I thank them as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica. Mr. Mersky.
Just a couple of things. I was attending, I've attended rather, a couple Neighborhood Watch meetings. And tomorrow, I'll be attending the Glenwood Heights Neighborhood Watch Meeting. I want to thank our Neighborhood Watch people for all that they do. And remind people that as we get closer to the holiday season, you know, to be careful leaving the stores, make sure that you put your bags in your trunks of your cars and, and make sure you lock your doors. And because those crimes of opportunity are there, and we have to be vigilant. And then finally, just Halloween will be here before our last, before our next meeting. And so as this replays on, on public access, just to remind everybody to be very safe around the Halloween trick-or-treating hours and look out for the kids. And, you know, it's, you can tell us about when the trick-or-treating hours are, Ms. Beck. But yeah, and then just be out there and be aware that the kids are out there and be safe. And give the kids good candy.
Mr. President, before you go on, I forgot one thing. He had me all flustered. Can I go back? Can I cut him off for a second?
Nothing new.
Okay. I just forgot one thing. I want to thank the Sewer Department because somebody stole the sewer cover, the round circle iron, cast iron cover on the corner of my house the other day. And there was in the paper that there was an arrest made, that someone was stealing the big circle covers over the sewer drain on the corner. Somebody stole mine. That wasn't very nice. So I did speak with the folks, and Rose helped me out here at Public Works and the Sewer Department. They did come and replace it very quickly, and I want to thank them for that. And hopefully, the guy who was caught will be held accountable. Thank you.
Can't get away from those potholes. Mr. Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. No specific committee reports. Do have a Water Authority meeting tomorrow afternoon. So hopefully, I'll be able to give some report on that in our next session. Would want to take a minute, just on the more community, you know, every once in a while, just kind of make a statement on community. And when we start our, our meetings, we, you know, have our moment of prayer or meditation, whatever, you know, is your persuasion to, to participate in. And we often talk about the importance of our community. And whether we're east side, west side, north side, south side, center city, go to Mercy Hill Prep or go to East High, we're all a part of the same community. Whether we're Democrat or Republican, black, white, younger, older, all of that stuff, those things really don't matter when it comes down to the real nitty-gritty of being in the part of the human family. And we've got some really significant issues in our community that affect not just one demographic, but affects us all. What affects one affects us all positively or not so positively. And so I just, you know, I would hope then, I'd like to invite those in the community that watch these meetings, that aren't engaged, to become more engaged in our community. Be a mentor, be an example, do something. Because we've got some significant issues, but, you know, the wonderful thing about it is all the answers are amongst us as well. And so if these are community concerns and issues, whether it be violence and poverty, all these different things we're, we're reading about but don't know how to really handle, because it seems to be so big, it really starts at the person-to-person level. And so if we can find ways to just kind of engage our young people, engage those who are disengaged in whatever way, shape, or form possible, we can increase the hope of, of people in our community. And we hopefully can begin to hear less about these robberies and home invasions and young eighteen-year-old men dying because of violence. It doesn't matter what race or any of that. It matters that a young life was lost, and I'm, in my opinion, unnecessarily. And so let's just really reach out to our community and really just kind of take, if you're already involved, become more involved. If you're not involved, it will directly affect all of us. Its economic development is involved. All these things come into play. Whatever your concern is about the city, your sphere of influence in the city, the, the social challenges affect every single dynamic in one way, shape, or form, or one time or another. And so we can't have issues of economic development and process and attracting businesses with a high crime rate. It directly affects that. We, we were, just, I was reading something the other day, and they said that Erie is like the top ten places in the country for people to retire. I thought it was great. And then like the next news report was shooting, home invasion. You know what I mean? So there's, we've got greatness here. But I think that we need to really, all of us need to take more of an investment in what, what is called home and try and find a way to, again, solve the issues, not legislatively, but people-to-person, person-to-person, heart-to-heart. And that's, again, that's the only way that we can really deal with it. So again, thank you, Mr. President. This is my, kind of my soapbox for the month, but I appreciate the time.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Just once again, comment on, thanks for the young kids coming out tonight. We had our crew from McDowell High School, thank you. Young kids, the Boy Scouts from St. Luke's. I was a Boy Scout a couple of years ago, as well as, my sons were also. As well as our young council member of the night, Charlie. It's great to see young kids here, and please, stay involved, keep up the good work. We need more, more guys like you out there and ladies. Other than that, I just want to thank my fellow council members for the job they do. With your authorities and your liaisons, I appreciate, it makes my job easier. And once in a while, you don't get that thanks like you deserve. And once again, thank you guys for what you do. Turn it over to junior councilman first, or Cas?
The Controller will yield his position temporarily to the Special Assistant to the Controller's Office. He's at my table, remember that.
Lastly, I just want to say to council, and especially to Mr. Witherspoon, thank you for having me, and thank you for recognizing all that I've done.
He's, I've worked with your father all day and I got you a night. He's a good guy. We attended the police pension meeting and also the entrance conference for the Auditor General's audit of the pension funds, which is done every two years. We'll keep you informed on that. And my final comment would be to embellish what Jim Clem mentioned earlier. Ms. Gloria Cachone was much more than the deputy city clerk. She was probably the one person most synonymous with the pensions here at the City of Erie. In my twelve years, except for when she, in her absence due to illness, and many years preceding me, she had been the president of the board. And she served with such a vigor that no one could deny that she treated like her own. And a bit of irony, she really never got to enjoy the fruits of that pension. As, you know, she hung around quite a while and then the unfortunate illness. It's a shame because she, more than anyone, was considered the safeguard of that pension fund. And she would go the wall for any, to defend anything with that fund, to protect its asset value and its integrity. So with that, I'd, you know, I'd like to say to her family that's remaining, she was one of a kind, and we will miss her.
Thank you, Cas. Ms. Beck.
Just a couple of things. Trick-or-treat hours, which I wasn't going to mention, so thank you, Mr. Mersky, for bringing it up. No, it's, it's important. Trick-or-treat hours are on Thursday, the thirty-first, Halloween, October thirty-first, from six until eight P.M., just so everybody is aware. Also, to the family of Gloria Cachone, our condolences. She takes with her so much institutional knowledge, and she was so very well-liked by some of the employees here. And we wish her family well at this very difficult time. Also, Charlie, congratulations on your award. Thank you for spending your evening with us. And thanks to Mr. Witherspoon for the invitation and the lovely award. He's a fine young gentleman, and our community is very lucky to have youth like Charlie and the Boy Scouts who attended this evening and the students from McDowell as well. Our, our future is in your hands. Thanks.
Thank you very much, President. How's Rock old doing?
I haven't had any updates on David. I heard that his aunt passed away this week.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Clem.
City Council now adjourned at eight fifty P.M. Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Evans, Mr. Rankunso, Mr. Jones, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Witherspoon.